Can somebody please help us reconvene to an open meeting and certify the closed meeting?
Move to reconvene to an open meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shire.
Second.
Thank you, and certify the closed meeting, please.
Does anybody have language? Have language?
Madam Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Mr. Rancuma. Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Ward.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Well, everybody rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is actually the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? All right, the agenda is adopted. This evening we have a public hearing on the budget, our second public hearing on the budget. We're going to do that part first, and then we're going to move to our usual public comment period, just to clarify that for folks in the audience. As you know, when you come up to the lecture, and please say your name and where you live, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. I have two slips for the budget. The first is from Sonia Urbom. Do you want to come up and say something?
Yeah. There we go. Good evening, my name is Sonia Urbom. I have two children at Thomas Jefferson. I live in the city. Do you need my address? At 203 Poplar Drive. One of my children is in third grade and plays the trumpet, and one is in fifth grade and plays the violin. They're both looking forward to being part of a music ensemble at school one day. I know the school board and the school administration have a difficult task ahead of them to adopt a fiscally responsible budget that will allow Falls Church to maintain the high educational standards that have earned this district such a good reputation. As you make many difficult decisions about how to best serve the exploding population of children in our city's schools, I urge you to consider the benefits of providing a high-quality music education for all students. Improving the Falls Church City Schools' music program doesn't need to cost more money than we have to spend to accommodate the growing number of children in the district anyway. One full-time equivalent music teacher can teach many more students than a regular classroom teacher. Likewise, one music room can serve a much larger population of students than one regular classroom. So if you look at the big picture of the district as a whole, maintaining a robust music program at all levels can actually save money over time. There is an abundance of research out there that shows the non-music benefits of a music education. I'm sure that you have heard most of it, so I won't belabor this point, but I would like to mention that research does show that students who take music classes at school tend to have fewer drug and alcohol problems. On average, music students score higher on both the verbal and the math portions of the SAT. And music education helps in the development of 21st century skills that employers prize, including critical thinking and problem-solving, collaboration, creativity, initiative, and self-direction. There are many people in Falls Church who value music education just for the value of music itself. Music brings communities together. It reminds us that as a group, we can create something much bigger and more beautiful than ourselves. It teaches young people that with practice and hard work, they can accomplish great things. Many children in the Falls Church community, like mine, are blessed to have parents that can afford to pay for a private music education for them. But not all of the children in our community are so lucky. And even for the children that do take part in music outside of school, they're missing the opportunity to be part of their school music community. As our schools get bigger, we risk having some children who may feel alienated and lost in the crowd. Every child should feel that they have a place at school where they can excel, where they feel that their contributions are meaningful, a place where they belong. It is wonderful that we have a strong band program in the upper grades, but we do not have a marching band or an orchestra. If we had a stronger music program throughout all the grades, including a strings program, more students would be able to enjoy all the positive benefits of a quality music education. I hope that the budget decisions you make take into account the benefits of a strong music program to the schools, the community, and to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Amanda Blanchard.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Amanda Blanchard, and I come here representing the Falls Church City Education Association. Just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding Saturday and as we move forward through the budget process. Again, encourage you to keep in the budget compensation equality for staff, compensation increases for staff, and the customary increases that might come with our benefits. Staff are still unsure about the need for additional days despite wanting more professional development time. They are not completely convinced that that requires additional days in our calendar. So any information that we can have that compares perhaps the scales that we've been provided with other information, just cross-referencing would help us support you if that is the decision that you make, or if we find conflicting information that we can go back and say, "Okay, maybe that's not the best choice." But overall, let us know if you need something. We will keep letting you know how we feel. Thanks so much.
Thank you, I'm sure you will. Is there anyone else who has not filled out a slip who wants to talk to us about the budget? No, okay, very good. Very good. The next thing we're going to do is our usual public comment section. I have two slips, one from Dr. Jerry Barrett and one from Bob Hall. Did you gentlemen want to speak separately, or are you going to speak together separately?
About time.
That's what I thought. Okay. So I'm going to call you both up at the same time. Just for everybody's notice, Dr. Jerry Barrett let me know they were coming to speak tonight. I agreed to have them talk during this time and to give them more time than we would usually give for them to speak on their topic. So, gentlemen, Mr. Bob Hall and Dr. Jerry Barrett.
I'm Jerry Barrett. I live at 200 North Maple in the neighborhood. Well, nice to see you.
Is your microphone on?
It's green, yes.
Okay.
That's good. Green's good. Okay. I want to congratulate the newly-elected members. I know a lot of you, but I don't know all of you. I'm here tonight in my capacity as a board member of the Community College, and I want to talk a little bit about that, and then Bob Hall is going to as well. I spoke last night to the city council, and my purpose in doing that was to thank them and congratulate them for continuing to support the Community College. I don't know if you, all the board members realize that there's a tax, I don't know what they call it, but there's a contribution that each jurisdiction has to make to the city council based on their, each local jurisdiction's governing body has to provide each year based on their population to the Community College. And some of the other board members have trouble getting their jurisdiction to come up with that money, and there's a, in some cases, a competition between that and the school board's budget. And we've not had that problem here, and I, in the eight years that I've had this job, I've never had to go to any great lengths, or to any lengths at all, actually, to get this to happen. And I see that as a recognition of a partnership between the college and the city, and I think that's a real positive thing, because much of what the college does is based on those kind of cooperative relationships that they make with each other. Before I go on with that, I just want to make this point. I've learned two things from the school board that I want to thank you for. One of them is, I see you up there with laptops and tablets. We never did that until this year, you know? And it's sort of daunting to me. I still think of my laptop as being a word processor, you know, and not much more, but somebody stands behind me and I don't do any damage that way. They collect them at the end, though. Use your own, or how's that worked out?
Some use their own and some not.
Some not, huh? Yeah, okay. And the ones that aren't, you turn in or you keep them? They won't let us keep them. So if you're keeping yours, I'm going to see what I can do about that, and I'll tell them where I learned about this, and, you know, obviously that'll work. The second thing is, I had an opportunity to meet your student member, and we've done the same thing, and we just did it this year, you know? And it's really worked, I hope it's working out as well for you as it has for us. I spent two hours with ours yesterday, you know, and it's just, he's a delightful character. And we're likely to, we're going to ask him at our graduation in May if he will introduce the keynote speaker. And don't tell anybody this, but we think the governor's going to come, you know? Big deal. But don't tell anybody. It's a sort of a semi, he's going to be in town that day. Okay. I just want to say a little bit more about the idea of cooperation. I think the way the college sees its relationships, just for example, with high schools, we see ourselves having a partnership with all the high schools in Northern Virginia for a variety of things that we do, and I'll just mention that most of them are things that you know about, you know? Consoling, instead of having to go to the college for consoling, seniors, juniors and seniors can get onsite consoling, which helps with the transition, you know, because that's always, I mean, all of us have gone through that, it's a problem, you know? And if you can have somebody there that clues you in on a lot of things that you wonder about, it's a big help. The whole dual enrollment thing, in which, you know, you can enter college with having earned credits already, is another example of that. And then the guaranteed admission thing is, I just think it's remarkable that that has worked out. And it includes all the colleges and universities in state, even one down near Fredericksburg. The, and then I think the low tuition is sort of a bargain and a cooperation with parents and kids both. And I think the college has done an amazing job of keeping their costs down to that. And then the STEM program, I think you're going to be talking with these people in t-shirts back here about that, and we've gotten a number of awards already for that, where we're cooperating, where we've already gotten industry cooperating with teaching in high schools and in middle schools already. I'm going to stop now and let Bob talk to you a minute. First, I want to introduce, a lot of you probably already know him, but I'll tell you a couple of things you might not know. He was on the, in the state legislature for 17 years, and half of those years, he actually represented this city. And then that passed, but while he was doing that, he had a column in the news press and almost weekly telling us what was going on in Richmond, and that's always a mystery to most of us. And, but the other thing that's little known about Bob is he has an associate degree in biology from Nova. So here he is. He's going to tell you a little bit more about things that I've skipped, and then he's going to extend an invitation to you. Nice to see all of you.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much. I am the Community Outreach Specialist at the Annandale Campus, and I have distributed to each of you some literature about the Northern Virginia Community College. The first one is our programs of study. As you can see, this is one of the most diverse schools in terms of programs offered. We offer associate degrees, we offer the Applied Associate Degree, we also offer one- and two-year certificates. I've also got for you the view book that we send out. Whenever anybody applies to go to Nova, we send this out to them in the mail, and it just gives them some information, general information about the college, about the different campuses, things that they can expect, and we always put some additional information here in the back. But I thought you might want to see what people get. There's also a postcard that has gone out called "Think You Know Nova, Think Again," and if you look on the back, there's some statistics that actually are a little bit outdated because this is about a year and a half old. For example, it says here, "Nova's the largest college in Virginia with 75,000 students in credit classes." Actually, last year, we had over 78,000 students taking four-credit courses at some point during the week, either on one of our six campuses, our four centers, or on our online program called the Extended Learning Institute, ELI. Twenty-five percent of local public high school students in Northern Virginia attend Nova. Of the Northern Virginia residents attending a college or university, forty percent go to Nova. We often talk about the low cost of the Community College, but one of the things that often doesn't get mentioned is the quality of instruction. It says here, "Our award-winning faculty include eight professors who have received the prestigious Outstanding Faculty Award from the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia." We actually have more award winners at the Northern Virginia Community College than the University of Virginia, than the College of William &amp; Mary, or Virginia Tech. We actually have the largest number of any school in Virginia. We're also the largest producers of nurses, healthcare workers, and first responders in Northern Virginia. And over 20,000 people annually take our non-credit courses, our workforce development courses, and that's what Jerry was alluding to in making an invitation to you. On the 25th of February, between 5:30 and 7:00 at Bentley's Restaurant down here at Annandale Road and Arlington Boulevard, we are hosting the Chamber of Commerce Mixer, and we are highlighting our workforce development and our Friday's-only program and weekend studies programs that are tailored towards adult learners. Before I leave, I also wanted to show you this postcard, "Good News for Virginia Students." There is in the Commonwealth of Virginia a two-year college transfer grant program. So those persons who are below a certain income, their families below a certain income level, and have achieved an associate degree can actually get money to transfer to a university or college of their choice. Jerry talked about the Guaranteed Admissions Program. Let me let you know how valuable that is. A lot of students who live in the city of Falls Church would like to go to the University of Virginia or Virginia Tech, and even though they don't admit it, they actually have quotas because if they didn't, both of their schools would be packed with Northern Virginia. So let's say somebody applies from the city of Falls Church to the University of Virginia, but they can't get in because there's just not enough room for them. If you go to the Northern Virginia Community College, get an associate degree, and maintain a satisfactory grade point average, you are guaranteed admission at the University of Virginia once you get that associate degree. We have separate agreements with the College of Engineering at Virginia Tech, which is also hard to get into. You do your two years at Nova, get your associate degree, have a 3.2 grade point average, you can get into the College of Engineering. And that's something that, if you do that, I'll give you an example. Let's say you go two years at Nova and then transfer to George Mason. Your family will have saved $16,000 by having you go the first two years at Nova versus going to George Mason University. And just to close, this is our high school student's guide to Nova, and this is our parent's guide to Nova. And the last piece of literature is the information about the dual enrollment program, which you all participate in. It's very popular, and we have high school students who earn a certificate or associate degree from the Community College in May before they graduate from high school in June. So it's a great program, you all participate, and it's a growing program, by the way. And we appreciate your participation in that and hope that we have been a benefit to the students and the parents here in the city of Falls Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for that. I just want to say a few words, which is, I have had an unusual opportunity through my participation in the Lead Virginia Network to visit community colleges throughout the state of Virginia, including the health campus of Northern Virginia Community College, which blew me away. And I just want to say a couple of things. First, the community colleges in our state are unparalleled anywhere in terms of both educating students who couldn't otherwise get degrees and developing specific workforce skills for employers in Virginia that keep us a strong state. But among all of the community colleges where I talk to their presidents or their rectors or whatever, they all looked Northern Virginia Community College for innovation and ideas and new programs. So us supporting that college helps our community and our kids, but it actually helps communities and kids throughout the state because of the levers that a community college has.
We are now the second-largest two-year college in the United States in terms of students, and actually, this past year, we are now number one in terms of degrees conferred. We conferred more degrees and certificates last May than any other two-year college in the entire United States.
Yes, it's wonderful. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. I hope people have a chance on the 25th to go and over to Bentley's and attend your event. All right, Dr. Jones, I'm going to turn it over to you for recognitions and reports.
Madam Chair, we do have one piece of written
Oh, I'm so sorry.
communication, and it is from Sandra Patricio, who is a school health aide at George Mason High School, who indicates she will be retiring at the end of the year. Nevertheless, she is writing in support of providing competitive salaries for our school health aides in the upcoming budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kimball. Good catch. Now, Dr. Jones, I'll turn it over to you for recognition and reports.
Well, I am going to actually invite Mrs. Ashaheed. Are you going to introduce this amazing group of students? And I must say, they actually invited me to come and meet with them, totally self-driven, and I think this was actually in December. So they've been very patient waiting to get on an agenda because we didn't want them to have to sit through the superintendent's budget presentation that evening. And I think you can appreciate that tonight because this was pretty fast, but thank you for your patience, Mrs. Ashaheed.
We appreciate this opportunity, and happy School Board Appreciation Week. I am not going to say much because they have their own presentation. I will say, we started this journey last spring, and I am proud to work with such a diverse and a very, very intelligent group of students. And so these five young men and women represent the larger student body, and they have a special presentation for you this evening. Thank you.
So, the, we're, our group is the XSTEM team, and we have a couple main points and purposes that we're trying to get across this year specifically. And basically, our general, if you're going to describe us quickly, it would be, we're trying to promote science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM throughout our school and community. So basically, one of the events that we're trying to work on this year is, well, I'm Colter Adams, and I'm in sixth grade, and one of the events that we're trying to do this year, and we're trying to promote, is actually a field trip to the Science and Engineering Festival in Washington, DC. So Nathan, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Okay. So, my name is Nathan, and I'm in eighth grade. And the Science and Engineering Festival has been running for three years now, this is its third year, and it is held in Washington, DC at a convention center. And it has been created to try and bring STEM into students' and the community's life. It brings together different organizations and businesses that have, that would like to share what they're doing related to STEM. And they all gather in this convention center for two days, for the public viewing session, a Saturday and a Sunday. And the public comes in and views what they have to offer and learns a lot and has a lot of fun. So, and we are proposing to have a field trip on Friday, which is a closed school viewing session of this. And we would also like to possibly have a Falls Church City booth there at the convention center to share what all of our school systems' STEM-related activities are doing.
Hi, I'm Jaden White. I'm an eighth grader. We think it would be great to take the field trip because most teenagers aren't really aware of what STEM is, and we think that by going to the field trip, it would be a great opportunity to get students interested in STEM, and so they could really get like hands-on activities to see what it's like, and maybe join the STEM team next year at Mason.
Hi, I'm Cindy Lay, and I'm in eighth grade. As the XSTEM ambassadors team, we think it's important to promote STEM throughout our community and our school. And we are an XSTEM school, actually, which is why we have our XSTEM ambassadors team. And we take part in the fifty guest speakers, the Nifty Fifty, and we actually had a guest speaker come talk with us about her, she was an astronaut and her International Space Station experience. Also, we visited Mount Daniel to help them with a activity. They had a bird theme, and we helped them construct birds as well. We also participated in a diet coke and Mentos experiment at, as actually, fifth-grade science fair last year. That was interesting. So we think it's important, as this field trip would be one of the ways to spread STEM throughout our community and school.
Nicholas Costa, I'm in seventh grade. We have sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders in our team, but, sure, but, so we also have a booth, or at least we're trying to get, I think we have one, do we have one? Okay, we have a booth, security booth, at the festival on Saturday and Sunday. And we have several events to be, we have several teams there. We have the Science Olympia Team, we have the FLL Team, the Technology Student Association Team, do we have the OM Team?
Uh, we could.
I think we might have the OM Team. So we're trying to promote XSTEM understanding, and by doing that, we have a lot of clubs in the school with XSTEM, well, just STEM really, science clubs, technology clubs, engineering and math clubs. So we feel that spreading knowledge and maybe even getting some people into those clubs is a good way to spread it. As well, we may even be participating at the booth ourselves to just do things. And a while ago, at Mount Daniel, we had a little exhibit on penguins. Yeah, and we had students, we helped students make little penguins out of recycled materials and taught them a few facts about penguins.
So, just a little more around that penguin experience at Mount Daniel. We had a great time, and actually, what we ended up doing was that we had a shortage of materials, and we originally just thought we had a planned-out choice of what materials we were going to use, but in the end, we had some technical difficulties, so we couldn't get the materials. So what we had to do is we had to improvise and find materials around the school that we could use to create the penguins.
Were there water bottles, I think?
Yes, we did, and so.
For water bottles for, I think.
Right. And also, one reason why it's important to have, in my opinion, field trips and interactive experiences is because many children our age, my age particularly, don't really understand what STEM is and what it means in the world. So if kids can get an experience that's interactive, as opposed to just hearing about it on TV and things like that, then they're much more likely to participate in it and indulge in it in school and ask more questions about it. So I think that it's definitely a good idea to interact with kids through hands-on activities as opposed to through tests and videos.
Okay, so, I'm back, and I will be wrapping up our session. We are actually already going, and we would just like to let you know that it is going to be the eighth grade through fifth grade. So all of Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School and fifth grade in TJ will get to go and experience this festival on Friday. And and fifth grade in TJ will get to go and experience this festival on Friday. And it's a lot of people, but it'll be a great experience. I've been there before. It was really fun. There are very, there's some very hands-on experiences there, and you learn a lot. And, yeah.
There you go. Can I ask one question?
Yes.
What does the X stand for at XSTEM?
It stands for extreme.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure. Do you mind? Thank you, and have a wonderful time. And please, after you go on your field trip, come back and give us a report.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, just Wait, guys, before you leave, I just want to say, I'm so proud of the initiative you guys have taken, and good luck on your field trip on Friday. Let me know how it goes, because I'm really interested in hearing. And I'm so thrilled that you guys came to the School Board to talk to us, and especially as students who are so young, that you guys are taking interest in all this stuff and are working to, you know, pursue your interests and, you know, working so closely with Mrs. Ashaheed to get this field trip in place, so you guys can do exactly what you want to do and make the school speak to your interests. So thank you for doing that, and I appreciate it. Good luck.
All right. Very nice. Very nice. Next is the consent agenda. Mr. Kimball?
Am I reading the consent agenda?
Is there somebody?
Okay. I can, want me to read it? Go ahead and read it?
Please.
Okay. First item, personnel staff appointments. That the School Board appoint James Lyon, maintenance building technician, system-wide, effective January 21st, 2014. Niat Jide, bus driver, system-wide, effective January 21st, 2014. Staff retirement, that the Board accept the retirement of Helen Hile, librarian at Thomas Jefferson, effective December 31st, 2014. Leave of absence, that the Board approve a leave of absence for a Thomas Jefferson employee, effective until April the 11th, 2014. And under pay for extra-duty assignments, that the School Board approve the following EPED assignments, two athletic EPED assignments at George Mason, winter season for the 2014 school year. And that is all.
Thanks very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. Did you get that? Who made the motion? Who seconded it?
John Martin.
Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? All right. Very good. Next is item nine, business action information. First is the naming of the Cherry Street Preschool Project.
Good evening. Again, I'd also like to thank you all and wish you well for the School Board Recognition Week. We thank you for your time and your service on behalf of all of our students and staff in Falls Church. My name is Debbie Heskot. I'm a seventeen-year resident of the city. And I had the honor of serving as the Chair of the Preschool Naming Committee. We had a large committee consisting of neighbors of the Cherry Street property, community members, parents, teachers, administrators, and central office staff. We had a very representative committee. We had a very open process. We asked essentially every person who lived in the city, who reads morning announcements, who participates in any number of our great communications vehicles, to give us their suggestions for names for our preschool via an online form. We had eighty-six suggestions that we started with, so we obviously had great response. Many of the suggestions were similar, but each was given individual consideration by our committee. The names were divided into four categories: cherry-related names, distinguished people in our city or country, nature-related, nature and geography, and one we classified as other. Some of the names suggested were more obscure names, and the committee members were provided with miniature bios of each of the individuals to help guide in our decision-making process. The committee felt that the names should follow the naming conventions of the other four FCCPS schools, not using the word "the" in the name, for instance, and calling them "schools," not "centers." The committee felt very strongly to keep our names consistent through our division. We, after we had our committee and we had our eighty-six names, we did a preliminary poll online to get a sense of those that were most popular with our committee members. And after we received that survey, there were a number of suggestions that received zero votes from the committee, and we agreed that these would not be further considered. Also agreed was that none of the entries related to trees, nature, flowers, et cetera, received a large amount of interest, and essentially that category was eliminated from our decision-making process as well. The highest vote-getter from our committee, ten of fourteen, was Cherry Street Preschool. And several other names related to cherry, Cherry Hill, Cherry Blossom, Little Cherry, were discussed and dismissed as being not quite descriptive of that particular site. In discussions of people, names that were nominated, the committee went through each and every name and discussed the connection to Falls Church, the appropriateness of naming a preschool after that person. Several notable people were eliminated, because while they had a connection to Falls Church, such as Ike Eisenhower and John Hartman of the Doobie Brothers, yes, in fact, he was from Falls Church, our committee determined that they were not necessarily appropriate for school naming. Several notable people who had very strong connections to our schools, but their focus was primarily on high school, and naming a preschool after them did not seem appropriate either. But we do recognize Lou Olum, Nancy Sprague were some of the names of people who have been very near and dear to our hearts, but perhaps not necessarily associated with preschools. Also discussed were names related to the Little City. The committee was very split on whether that term described a geographical region or was a trademarked marketing idea. The committee invoked on this, and we decided not to include references to the Little City and the name of our preschool. And last, there are a number of names that were plays on words that were clever and might end up as a nickname for the school, but weren't appropriate for the official name, the Danx for Mount Daniel Annex, for instance. There was also conversation about whether a living person could be honored with the distinguished name of the school. And Dr. Jones, in fact, checked our School Board policy, and it does not prohibit the naming of a school after people who are alive. I, being a Tar Heel, I'm very fond of the Dean Smith Center, and he was alive while we were there. That was the point of reference, so, you know, keeping that in mind. So without further ado, after I describe the process, we have five names that the committee has recommended to the School Board for consideration. I'll read you the names, and then a quick background that was discussed with each of the committee members. The five names that we'd like to present to you are Cherry Street Preschool, Jessie Thackeray Preschool, Kathleen Halaico Preschool, Matty Gundry Preschool, and Proctor Preschool. And the brief background on each of the five finalists and why they were determined to be finalists from our committee. The Cherry Street Preschool, the street where the school is located, is called Cherry Street. It's simple, it's easy, and it's the name that most people are familiar with, because we've been using it as a placeholder, the Cherry Street Project. Jessie Thackeray Preschool, Jessie Thackeray, as you all know, was a centaurian and passed away last summer. Jessie Thackeray was a dedicated Falls Church leader. She was one of the founders of the city and the school division. Jessie was a dedicated parent, citizen activist, and school volunteer. She served two terms on the School Board. For many years, she was an ardent school activist, appearing at city council meeting even several months just before her death at age a hundred. As a School Board member, she advocated for the addition of paraprofessionals at elementary level. In recent years, through her daughter Sue, who worked at Mount Daniel, she had a close connection with the preschool, visiting classes, having them come to her home, plant, and harvest gardens. The Jessie Thackeray classroom has been marked with a plaque. She visited that kindergarten classroom for several years and was routinely Star of the Week, and shared her story with all of the kindergarten students. Kathleen Halaico Preschool, Ms. Halaico is a twenty-five-year FCCPS employee. She has been principal of Mount Daniel for the past fifteen years. Previously, she was a speech therapist at Mount Daniel. During her tenure, she started the Mount Daniel Preschool Program, including the Family Literacy Program. Her entire tenure in Falls Church has been focused on our youngest students. Nomination number four, Matty Gundry Preschool. Matty Gundry lived 1862 to 1947, and in 1899, Matty Gundry moved the Gunwell School out of the Home Hill House and purchased the Shiler-Durier House on the 300 block of West Broad Street, near the modern-day intersection of West Broad and Little Falls Street. The new house was enlarged and the school renamed to the Gundry Home in Training for Feebleminded, and later to the Virginia Training School. Matty Gundry became nationally known for her work teaching mentally disadvantaged children basic knowledge and skills, and served on the Falls Church Town Council in 1921. The school successfully operated this location until 1946, and was the only school of its kind in the South, and the second-largest in the US at the time. And the last selection by our naming committee was the Proctor Preschool. The Proctor family lived on Cherry Street and were the founders of the original Easter Seals Child Development Center, which has obviously been in that location since then. With respect, we submit those names for your consideration for the Cherry Street Project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Are there any questions from anyone on the Board or our student liaison? Any questions for Debbie? All right. Thanks very much. For the Board, you saw this information, I guess we've had it about two weeks. This is on the agenda this evening. We can, I'd like to discuss it. We can either select a name and adopt and vote on it this evening if we think we're ready to, or we cannot, depending on how folks feel. And I don't have any sense of that. So let me just start maybe with Margaret down here on my left, and maybe you can share your thinking at this point about this, about this topic.
Sure.
Make it go green. There you go.
I'd like to focus mainly on Jessie Thackeray. I think she was a fantastic citizen of Falls Church. She's done so much for the schools. She's left, certainly left a legacy. And I also, Kathy Halaico, I mean, it's really tough. She started these programs at Mount Daniel, and now they're moving to another location. It seems right and just that this, that she be considered as one of the names for the school. And of course, Matty Gundry, I mean, I would put her last, only because we have a street named after her. And I would be, I'd like to focus more on the preschool aspect for the name. And Matty Gundry, while she was a fabulous person and was big into education, particularly for people with cognitive disabilities, I think either Jessie or Kathleen would make a better, would make a better name for this preschool. Is that?
Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Ankuma, your thinking?
In the light of what Mrs. Scott shared, I wonder if we could, I don't know if she's willing, if she's able to provide that information to us about the backgrounds, because that obviously would influence my decision-making. I had some ideas, but with what I've heard, I may want to consider it a little bit. If we don't have to vote today, and maybe push it to another day, maybe at our next meeting, that would be fine by me.
Okay. So you'd like more background on the five names?
If we could, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would rather not vote tonight, simply because I'm still going back and forth between a couple, mainly Jessie, simply because, you know, my God, she's Jessie. But my Ohio upbringing can't get away from just calling it the Cherry Street School, since I think everybody's going to end up referring to it as that anyway. But, yeah, if we could do it at our next meeting, I think that would certainly give me time to not have any more excuses.
There's an honest man. Karen?
I want to thank the committee for their work, and all those who provided the suggestions. And certainly, they're, all are very worthy. And I would like some more time to consider, I think, having the full statement from the committee, to consider in writing for a time would be helpful for us. And I do appreciate the sentiments of my colleagues. I think they're very, very insightful, and thank you for bringing them forward tonight.
For me, same thing, just getting additional information and give at least a little bit, another, just to kind of toss some names around, because there are some great folks that are out here listed on this to consider. And I agree with John that I think still, whatever name we put on it, it's still going to have some type of potential Cherry Street calling to it. So it's just, do we go down that road, or do we potentially try to honor someone?
Mr. Castillo?
Well, I think, I don't know, first of all, Debbie, thank you for your, for your work on this. Going from eighty-six to five is obviously hard, and we could probably look forward to the additional schools we're building, and maybe we, we will have enough schools for all these names.
But when Jessie Thackeray died this summer, the first thing that came to mind to me was that this would be a great way to remember her very pervasive legacy, both to the city and to the schools, on so many fronts. And it's a very difficult decision, but I think I remain inclined to, to make good on that and to, to name that in her memory. All right. Thanks very much. Thank you, Deb. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, Maeve. Gosh, such an airhead.
It's okay. First of all, I would just also like to say thank you to, we did have two students on the committee. I want to thank Dr. Jones for helping with that process. They were, I'm assuming, participated in the earlier rounds. For whatever reason, conflicts arose for the final meeting. But I, I mean, I think all these names are great. I am leaning towards, not that, you know, voting, but I very much like Jessie Thackeray and also Matty Gundry, but I was not considering the street name, so that would sort of sway me a different way as well. But, yeah, I would just like to make sure that those students who participate in the process were acknowledged as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks to the committee. That was a lot of work that you did. And I appreciate that you got the information to the Board a couple of weeks ago, and we had a chance to look at it. We'll certainly continue to consider that. I don't know if there's more detailed information to send, but if you have some, you know, send it along. You know, I would, with Matty Gundry, I just, if I could just take a moment of personal privilege and to remember my history here in the city of Falls Church. A number of years ago, just after my first child was born, I was on the Women's Commission, when we had one here in the city of Falls Church. And Margaret was on the Women's Commission at that time with me. And we actually defined a Matty Gundry Award, which we gave each year to a woman in the city of Falls Church of note. And the Women's Commission has gone by the Board, and the Matty Gundry Award has gone by the Board. But she is absolutely an outstanding woman from our history. I'm going to fall in with my, my friend, Mr. Castillo over here, and say to me, it's very clear that Jessie Thackeray should be recognized for her service through the naming of this school. So that's where, that's where I'll be headed. But I certainly respect the rest of my colleagues, and we will put this on the agenda for a vote at our next meeting. If there are members of the community that have ideas and want to tell us about them, about your preferences, feel free to call us, email us, send up smoke signals, or anything else you'd like to do, let us know what you're thinking. All right. Thanks, Kendra. Moving along. Next is the extended daycare update.
They were wearing red.
I know, there was a memo.
Wow.
This is the extreme daycare.
This is extreme. Yes, this is ex daycare.
The Advisory Board put together a statement and sent it to you guys ahead of time, so that you could get an idea of what's, what's been going on this year and what we're faced with. Certainly not a simple decision or an easy decision, in fact. It bothers me a lot. I don't like to see a lot of change. This is a big change for us. But what we've been faced with is a record enrollment, and it's not going to go away. And our space is going away at Mount Daniel, and I had a meeting just today with Mrs. Halaico, trying to discover, how are we going to do this next year? So I don't see how we're going to avoid a waitlist. So we want to be able to protect our program, the quality of it, the sustainability of it, and make sure we're serving the people of our community the best way we can. We do recognize that eventually, space will become better at Mount Daniel, but enrollment's still going to go up. So the changing of those enrollment options is pretty critical to us, to be able to make sure our program is viable and that we're serving. So you have the statement. We've been meeting with Dr. Jones about this as well. She's come to two of our meetings now, and she's in support of our, of the decision of the Advisory Board, so.
All right. Let me just see if there are questions.
Absolutely. We're here, definitely, may I answer questions?
Maeve, shall I start with you? No. The first one to start with her, she can't. Yes. Down on this end, any questions? Issues? John?
Sorry, just one. No, it's a nice one.
Okay.
Don't give me that look.
He's got the part-time kid.
So you almost see this as a temporary thing?
No.
Okay. Even though you might get, you're eventually gonna get more room.
I still think we're gonna end up with higher enrollment, and they're all just gonna be full-time kids.
Right. Okay. And you're doing this for, even though the space is toughest at Mount Daniel, you're doing this for both?
Right.
And TJ, just to keep it consistent?
What we're struggling with this year at TJ is keeping staff, enough staff to cover all the kids that we have. The state ratio is one to eighteen. We like to maintain one to twelve to have that cushion when people start to leave. We're well past that now. We're pushing the one to eighteen right now. Can't seem to get enough people hired. But don't get me wrong, staffing has always been a challenge for the program. It's just getting more difficult the more children we have. So we're trying to make sure that, not necessarily that we're squeezing out a certain bunch, but that we're serving the people who are gonna be using it the most, and that is full time. But we're not gonna realize that really for a few years, so we want to make sure that we're doing it gradually, we're not hurting the people who are already in the program. We want them to be able to keep that as long as they stay in the program, so it's gonna be phased out.
Okay. Yeah, that was another question, was the way you're doing it, I mean, you're, you're not gonna, you know, fix it right away, but phasing it out, you're still gonna be able to keep the ratios and?
Well, if we get kind of close to, for TJ, the capacity will be based on staffing. If we don't, we're gonna base it on a certain ratio of staff, that's how many kids we can, we can actually take at that time. If we're gonna surpass that, then we have to start a waitlist. The minute we decide we need a waitlist, they can have to stop varying their days. They have to stick to three days. We're already gonna have to go into Mount Daniel with that in mind. They're already gonna have to stick to their three days, because we know that we're gonna end up with a waitlist, just by enrollment projections that are coming our way. And that's part of what Mrs. Halaico and I talked about this morning. TJ, I'm not, I really don't want to have to go in that direction. I really want to gear up some more staff this summer so that we can bypass that for a little bit longer and be able to let TJ just sift its way through as a Mount Daniel. Kindergartners coming in will all be full-time, so that will eventually make its way all the way through TJ. And people do come and go. I mean, we have this transient area. We do see State Department families go, and other people will make it in. So I think it should be a rather smooth transition, and that's what the hope was from the advisory board, was that it's not gonna be an instant hurt for people, that the transition will be less painful.
Now, is there any part-time at, at MEH?
There is, and they only have about thirty kids, but that's also the age group where you're trying to encourage them to go home. So they need part-time really to, to even have a program. They're split right down the middle right now. They have seventeen full-time and eighteen part-time. So without the part-time, they wouldn't have much of a program. And it's, it seems to be viable at this point. We'll always revisit that to see if it changes, but since the fifth grade moved back to TJ, it's been a very small group.
Right.
So they'll, they'll keep it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just quickly, Mr. Kimball pointed out to me that you hadn't really described the change that you're recommending, so for the record and for the community, could you just quickly just, I mean, most of it's come out in your conversation with John, but if you could just very quickly?
It was a wonderful suggestion, to phase out part-time rather than just to dump it. Six years ago, in two thousand eight, after the task force met and made their recommendations, we got rid of one day a week, which was really difficult to maintain anyway. That was the first enroll, enrollment option to go. That's when we first recognized, wow, part-time has got, it's, time is ticking on that one. But we kept it up, and we kept it up, and we were able to do it. Now we're just faced where we can't do this anymore. So how do we do it, and how do we do it so it doesn't hurt? And that's when that discussion first started, how are we gonna do this? And it was suggested that we phase it out. Well, how do we phase it out? Everybody who has it can keep it, and everybody who comes in new to the program comes in full-time. And quite frankly, in this area, you are not going to find part-time childcare in a school-age setting. You just aren't. So people coming here aren't expecting it. Kindergarten parents are not expecting it. It's been a great surprise for them, and they certainly do utilize it, but they're not expecting it. So I don't think it'll be very painful on that end. I think it'll be hard for the people who are used to being able to vary the days, add days here and there. Those, those days will end. So that could be a little bit challenging for some families, but certainly not impossible. So that's how it came about.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Maeve, do you have comments?
My favorite daycare kid in the world.
I would just like to say, as someone who, as someone who did go through daycare full-time, I think through fourth grade, it was, it was a great program, and I know it's definitely very hard for you guys to make that decision, I can see that right now. But thank you so much for all the work you've done on this, and I'm sure your programs will continue to be wonderful even without the, you know, extra influx in and out of varying kids, so I think it'll be, it'll be great.
And I'm very proud of you.
We all are.
So while I'm not the most objective party here, seeing as I've obeyed Katie's wishes for the last five years, and the daycare advisory board, and I'm not about to stop. I just want to say, it's obviously, we're coming up against a space constraint with all the construction and all of that stuff. And in fairness to them, unlike the Affordable Healthcare Act, you get to keep it if you have it, so.
All right. Thank you. Down on this end, Mr. Castillo, do you have any questions or comments?
I just had one question. Let's say you're a family with a kid who's there now, there's a sibling coming the year behind.
They don't get it.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was the hard one to discuss, but if we could go on forever with siblings, and it would never end. And then if you have a kindergarten class with one part-time kid in it, it just starts to, it throws everything off, so we.
So it's a hard stop.
Hard stop. So that part, it could be some frustration for some, a few.
Okay.
Hopefully, very few.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad that, I was trying to see if you hadn't thought of that one.
No, I got that one.
Good try.
I actually have a whole sheet, a prepared letter for parents to go out to them, to inform them. We're making big posters of it that we're gonna put up, just definitely getting the word out over and over again, so that they, they understand. They also have to enroll by the end of June. We ask, usually have them re-enroll every year, but this is the first time we're actually including that naughty word waitlist, and that scares me, too. I can't imagine what it's gonna do to the parents, because for thirty-eight years, we haven't had to do this. But they, they need to re-enroll by June thirtieth so that they get their spot. And then after June thirtieth, June, July first is when we invite kindergarten parents to start registering, and anybody who's new can start registering. So that's when we start realizing, how many kids do we have? And where do we go? So it's gonna be exciting July.
You clearly have thought it through. I guess my only bit of advice would be, more notice is better than less, and maybe a couple of morning announcements worth.
Oh, absolutely. That's got my little PR list.
Okay. Well, you, you have definitely thought it through, so I give up. You win.
Well, thank you.
All right. Mr. Webb?
No specific questions, just, I know it's probably has been a, a big challenge for you all to try to come up with a plan and probably look at every option that you could to potentially not get to this point, but I completely understand with the growth that has happened, that you kind of have to, to figure out a way to best accommodate as many students as possible, and in the best way to be able to do it, so. I know it's tough, but I commend you all for.
Change is hard.
I commend you all for, for taking this on and, and looking at every possible option out there.
Karen?
I, too, want to commend you for very creative and, I think compassionate option that you've, that you've put together in a relatively short time. And I, I was on the daycare liaison role for a number of years in the early, early time period, particularly with Bobby Kaplow, your predecessor. So I also have a great, great, good feeling about, about the program. It has a great history here. We were pioneers in creating this, this ability for all of our parents to really have an option. We haven't, in all of our history, had a, had a, had a waiting list, and I think you've gone as, as far as anyone could possibly go to, to continue to have that option available for, for as many parents as possible. Thank you very much.
I actually do have one other question. Have we, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, Maeve.
Have we always had daycare provided at the middle school even, or, yeah, even when it was?
Nineteen ninety-six started.
Right of George Mason. Okay.
Thank you, ladies. I appreciate your work on this, and just use that PR plan.
Yes. Oh, well, absolutely.
All right. Very good. Next on the agenda is the approval of twenty fourteen extended daycare summer fees. Is that you?
Sure. Sure.
Come on down.
Let's see. It's a two percent increase proposal. Last summer, we did one. We're just, we're not trying to be greedy. We want to, you know, make our budget. We're anticipating additional costs for benefits from our supervisors moving to twelve months, as well as wage increases for staff. And then we're also gonna have larger programs. We're trying to not have a waitlist for our summers, so we're breaking back up and having separate programs for each of the age groups, which means more staff as well. So we're just trying to do as much as, a little bit as we can to not have to raise fees too much on parents, so.
Okay. That's it? Great. Thanks. Any questions on the board about the summer daycare fees? Anyone? All right. Very good. Is there a motion to approve the summer daycare fees?
Moved that the school board approved the twenty fourteen extended daycare summer fees as proposed.
Is there a second to that? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. We're good. Thank you, ladies. Last note on the extended daycare. John, since you are our liaison to the Mount Daniel project, just kind of put this in the back of your head to make sure, as we move through that project, you and Dr. Jones pay attention to daycare space.
It's, it's in the actual RFP.
I know.
Yeah.
We're in the beginning.
Yep.
Time will go by, things will change, things will happen, so. All right. Very good. The next item is the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school calendar.
This is actually draft number two. Every year, on the calendar committee, Marty puts together the first draft, just to get the committee started, and the committee is representative of people from across the school district, and we get together and we look at how many days we need on our calendar and where best to put those. And then we also have to consider things like graduation, and when we have graduation booked, because that's pre-booked as well. This year, the calendar is reflective of one extra instructional day and also four of the professional days that are reflected in the budget this year. And just as a reminder, that has to do with the two-hundred-day contract that teachers are on, and we are asking that our teachers be onsite for scheduled days more often than we have been in the past. In the past, we've had nine, nine of those days unscheduled, and we have heard loudly and clearly that we need more professional development, very focused, and so you'll notice on this calendar, there are two types of professional days. One is a teacher professional day, and one is a division professional day. So that's that blue and the green triangle. And that is so that on the division professional days, we're very focused on things like NYPD, our response to intervention and RTI, all of the large district initiatives, as well as technology integration. We have a brand-new literacy component that actually will start all the way in pre-K through elementary with new curriculum next year, as well as we're in the first really implementation year this year. Next will be the second of our new math curriculum, especially in elementary. So we have a lot that we need to be doing in professional development, and as you know, finding the time is always one of the most critical pieces. So we would like to have our staff with us, more days than we have in the past, and one more instructional day as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Could you just give a little background for the board and the community about how this calendar gets developed?
Right. It's a whole committee of people, and I'm, Marty could probably remember the list better than me, she does all the invites, but it's from, it's two basically from every school site, all the principals, most of the principals are there, athletic directors there. So the big calendar pieces, we take this and figure out where the holidays need to go, and then from this, we have what is called, well, they call it calendar wars, really, and that's where all of the SAO, all of our affiliated organizational groups all come together and take this kind of template and start figuring out where all of the big division dates go. So it's a big process. This is the first step is just, and, and this really is looking at things like, how many days off do you have before Thanksgiving? You know, where does winter holiday actually fall? Do you have the day off before? Is it a, you know, a half-day to start the winter holiday? Looking at all of those issues, and it's, this part of the calendar is very staff-driven because the needs of elementary are different than the needs of secondary. For instance, in November, for our elementary teachers, it's critical to them that they have the third and the fourth for conference days. They feel like, especially for informing parents about early literacy, they want to have those as conference days. High school actually will use those days for site professional development. They don't necessarily, now, MEH, I know, last year did their conferences on one of those days. And then when you look at other areas of the calendar, like on January thirtieth, for instance, that day, if you're in elementary, is, is spent very differently than it is the secondary, because it's a big grading day, and that's where it's actually planned by the site. So all of those pieces come into play, and it takes quite a while, actually, just to get the pre-K through twelve calendar, where everybody feels like their needs are being met at the site level.
Okay. So staff has input, administration has input, community has input?
On this part, the community has, not really so much the school, really, it's this, this piece is more driven by the schools.
You're talking about your SAOs.
That's the next piece. After we get the bones of this, and SAOs all get together.
Right. But by the time we see it?
Like, as far as the days off? No. We actually, we have never, as a school division, at this point in time, figuring out when the conference days fall, when the holidays fall, when graduation is. That's staff-driven. And then SAOs will take, if this, if the school board approves the bones of the calendar, whether that's this month or next month, then the SAOs all come together and start using this structure to plan when all of their major events happen.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that update, because we used to have, we used to have a school calendar committee that had members of the community on it that would take part in this, but I guess that's changed.
Yeah, that's the next committee.
Right. And I don't think it came to us for approval until all that had gone on, but apparently it does. Okay. So anybody on this dais or sitting down there have questions, concerns, issues about the calendar? Maeve?
Do we have money in the budget for outside professional development, or like focused professional development? Because if we're adding the calendar days, I'm just not convinced that they're gonna be that.
We actually do that right now, and it's, as a matter of fact, it's probably one of the largest portions of our budget. We bring in an RTI specialist who flies in from out of state. He's coming in every quarter, very, very focused time with every school site. NYPD, as a matter of fact, is a line item of about thirty thousand dollars just to get all the training done next year. We also have brought in even this year, a literacy specialist from Virginia Tech who's worked with us, and next year, we'll have that again. We also have a gifted specialist who's been working with us on our whole brand-new gifted plan. So our goal is really to bring in as many experts, experts as we can that are very effective on really enhancing a whole school or the whole school division, instead of sending lots of individual people to conferences that don't necessarily have a big effect as a school division.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone down on this end? Karen, do you have a question, issue?
Yeah, I have a few. I think one of the things that, and thank you, Maeve, for getting to one of the aspects. Your question, I think, involved whether we had already built into the budget that's proposed, the funding for the special training folks who would come in on these additional days to help with the staff. I understand it's in the proposed budget, it's not in, it's not in the adopted budget at this point. And I think there are some other, some other points, too, that where we, we have, we heard tonight from our representative of the Teachers Association, a request that we, kind of, at least I, the request I heard was hold this in some abeyance while we have some more chance to discuss it. That they felt that there was not a definitive conclusion that had been reached as to whether these additional onsite professional days were really needed. And so that's, that's another factor, at least, that I'm considering. And I also want to point out that this calendar is very constrained by outside influences. One of them is the state's mandate that we not begin before Labor Day. And another is that we have high-stakes testing from a variety of different sources. Some of them, we have voluntarily undertaken with, in the case of the IB type of programming. Others have been imposed on us from the outside. But in both cases, we have a constrained way in which we approach our points in the calendar that we generally cannot change. And so we have a kind of mid-May, end of the calendar, and a post-Labor Day beginning of the calendar. And those are the, the times that we really have to fit all of our academic programming into, into those, those parameters. I think, hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to loosen those constraints. We may get some help from the General Assembly this year, in the sense that we may have fewer of the high-stakes tests to prepare for, and we'll be able to place the timing of those tests at different points in the year. But still, we, we work with a number of constraints on what we can do. Now, I have in the past, and probably will continue to be a proponent of trying to, to change the calendar and get to a point where we have the option to begin before Labor Day, but I don't see that happening for the 2014-15 school year. I do hope that we can use what we have to the maximum advantage possible. And that I would like to hear more about the need for the professional days, the extra ones that have been proposed. I'd like to hear some more about the, the way in which we will plan to use the last portion of the school year, between, say, May 15 and the end of the school year, and how we will provide for the appropriate continuity between one year and the next for learning and instruction. I think, as we think about the stress that is imposed upon our students by having to work within the confines of the post-Labor Day to May 15 scheduling, one way potentially to, to relieve some of that pressure is to be able to get at the continuity, better continuity between one year and the next, so that people, so that people are better prepared for the beginning of that next year. And they're not, they're not having to make up for time that they've lost in learning during the summer. So I would, I would like to hear additional input on that. And before, whether we adopt this program tonight or not, I would like to hear how we are going to make maximum, better use of that, of that time period. So I, if this comes to a vote tonight, I will probably vote either abstention or no, because I don't think some of these things have been resolved. But even if it is approved tonight, I would like to have some additional opportunity to review how we're going to make best use of the calendar. Thank you.
Mr. Webb, anything?
One quick question that Mr. Sharp brought up, and I just want an understanding of it, because I've always wondered. Not that I'm advocating one way or the other for it, but what is the policy and how does the state give the waivers to certain school districts to start early versus not some of the other ones getting? For example, my nephew, who's downstate, south side of Virginia, starts way into August when he starts school. And I just always have wondered, just what are the parameters to allow that? And I'm, just to get a better understanding of why most northern Virginia jurisdictions don't get that opportunity.
Yeah, do you want to take that?
It actually has to do with weather, for the most part. Most of the waivers that are granted, because those schools are allowed to start in August, because they have difficult winters, kind of like we're experiencing this year. So you know you're going to lose X amount of days, and they have to be able to have time in their calendars to make those days up. That's one. So if, but if they miss one year and they don't have bad weather, they will not get a waiver the next year. And now, the second one is you have to have a creative or innovative program. And that is very difficult, as far as what they will or will not approve, but it has to be innovative, creative. We talk about it all the time in Region Four, because some of us get more snow than others. So for instance, Loudon, I think it's Loudon that actually usually gets a waiver, and it's pretty easy. But then for those of us on this northern side, not so much. So those are the two ways that you can get a waiver.
Yeah.
That's quite interesting, that waiver, because having grown up there. It does not snow very often there, so that's really odd. Where, where I grew up at would be more of the region that would be, at least at one time.
Does it rain?
Would be, not really. Would be more, not really. But it would be more of the region that would take advantage of the Kingsdom and Yol because it's a rural agriculture area, but they start, the county I grew up in, and then my sister lives in the next county over, that both of those jurisdictions have the waiver where they start in August. So to kind of get that explanation.
Yeah.
It really makes no sense now to me of, of how they, they pass it out.
It's a moving target. The General Assembly doesn't seem to want to pass a different law. We had it, last year, we thought we had it, and we did not. Department of Education has done some work over the last few years on this topic and trying to kind of broaden and the possibilities and the reasons you can have a waiver, but it's, it's a, that's what it is. That's what it is. Just, Justin, did you have any questions?
I had a question for, two questions for the superintendent. So does, does IB count as an innovative program? So.
It's an awesome program, but not innovative.
Okay, got it. That clears that up. The, the other question is, on the, on the back end, having a senior, I noticed that graduation will occur before the end of the, of the school year. Does that mean, is George Mason done? Or do they go to graduation and then they finish up on the last two days?
Well, you have some exams going on for those kids that necessarily are not seniors. Seniors are supposed to report and they go to graduation. And truthfully, that graduation date is driven more by when we can book Constitution Hall, and then we have to make the calendar and Constitution Hall work together.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that sort of buttresses Mr. Sharp's observation that the calendar tail is wagging the school dog a little bit. The, the other thing that I would point out here is I, I think we, we should remind ourselves that we're in sort of a fortunate quirk of the calendar period with a luxurious two-week, full-two-week Christmas break by virtue of the fact that Labor Day falls very early. So we're sort of, it's not nearly as bad as if school started on the 7th. And, and I think it, it is true that these constraints distort the calendar and the educational imperatives. And, and I think we shouldn't, we, we should remind ourselves that the problem doesn't manifest itself as much this go-around because the way the calendar is falling, so.
Yeah, just another comment on the, on the calendar. It's, it's not clear that even where the General Assembly didn't give us the flexibility that this particular community would support it, there would be a lot of work to be done to talk with parents and other members of the community. We haven't done that work yet, because we don't believe we can get a waiver to do it anyway. But that's just another, another part of that component. I would say that I do like this calendar, because the first day of school is on my birthday, and I think that, that all children should have to go to school on the first day on my birthday. I, I think that, just a couple of comments. One, I think I won't call for a vote on this matter tonight. Seems like there are some questions that people have. I'd like to learn more from staff about why they don't believe that they need more professional development days and what that's about. Maybe at our next work session, Amanda, you could come and talk to the board a little bit about that. I'd like to have that insight on the part of staff. Dr. Jones was going to, some people will be able to do that, yeah, in that usual fashion. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Also, I had this kind of aha last Saturday at our budget work session about the fact that in adding an additional instructional day to the calendar, the cost to the budget was a little bit south of $12,000. And it makes me wonder whether we might, if the staff don't feel like they need more of those days for professional development, whether we might not have more instructional days in our calendar within a small additional cost for that. And I think the board maybe could think about that and talk about that. And then the third thing is, I did want to ask Dr. Jones, relative to other jurisdictions in our area, we all have 200-day contracts for our teachers, and how many days do they have in school and how many not? Just so we have an understanding of how we fit today and under your proposal.
Well, and it's interesting, a lot of the school divisions don't have any unscheduled days, but the ones that are noted in the WABGOT is unscheduled are Arlington, and they're at 194 or 5 right now, 194. Alexandria is at 197. So this calendar would, we would fall right in the middle between what Arlington and Alexandria have for their days.
Thank you very much. So this would kind of put us in the mix?
Right.
All right, very good. So at our next Tuesday budget work session, I think we need to have a little chat about this, and then we can come back at our next meeting and potentially take this calendar issue up. So thanks to everybody who worked on this. Yeah.
Quick, while Virginia has many constraints on the calendar, it also has some school districts that were pioneers in alternative calendars. And I'm not just talking about Fairfax County here that has, that had at one time 10 schools on an alternative calendar and then erased those during the recession. There have been some that have been, been in existence for more than 25 years. One is in Buna Vista, Virginia, a high school program. That was, the, the principal there was, again, a nationally-known speaker on, on how to do a year-round program. Danville, Virginia, is another one where elementary schools have, have had a, an alternative program for more than a decade. And so there are places that find ways to do this, not nearly as affluent, or some might say, not nearly as seemingly smart as Falls Church. But they figured it out, and, and they've been able to do it. I, I would ask that we take some time to consider how we might do things better.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sharp. And with that, let's move along. Oh, do you have something? Yes?
Yeah, can I, Madam, I would like to respond to that comment really quickly. To Mr. Sharp, I would just like you to maybe, I don't know if this is something you considered before. The number of activities that our students are able to pursue during the summer, programs like Governor's School, other programs that are offered at colleges, different, you know, STEM-intensive programs, that if we look to going to a year-round school, that they're going to lose access to some of those things. And I don't know if it's something that, you know, I don't think within a division so small, even though we are growing, that we would be able to provide all of our students with similar opportunities that would allow them to learn stuff that they could never learn within our own school community. So I just, that would be an argument for summer. And then also, Mr. Garcia, we have special senior schedules, pretty much regardless of when graduation falls, so that June is very, looks very different for seniors, anyway.
Very different. Thank you for that. All right. Mr. Lawrence, have you any questions or issues?
Just a couple. One is, Tony, we've got the upside-down brown triangle for early dismissals. I just want to clarify, since early dismissals on a school-by-school basis is sort of a third-rail topic, this doesn't reflect any of those. So it, when you look at this, if you think early dismissal, oh, my kid's getting out early at Mount Daniel on Wednesday, you look at it and suddenly you go, oh, my God, there are none.
Right, that's the next layer. And we do the SAOs, and then we go back in and work with principals on all of the early dismissals. So the only one you see reflected on here now, I know there's the winter holiday, which is the 19th, is the half-day, but then those actually get placed at the next round of calendar development.
Okay. No, I just, I'm trying to head off emails from certain people I know. And on the, the division professional days, does that mean every teacher has to do something that is division-wide, or simply that something is offered division-wide, and they can do something at their school, or they can do the division-wide program?
Well, what we, what we actually do is, at the division level, is where we work with Lisa and her staff and principals as well, to plan a day that could be, like, at the beginning of the year, we have, we've done the last two years, a half-day in the morning, where everybody in the district is at George Mason. We're offering mainly technology sessions, but they've broadened even this year, 20-some-odd sessions. And teachers choose which sessions they want to go to, but they're all sessions that are in line with everything that we're working on as a division. So if we have a new software program, or maybe just even our reading program, a teacher really needs to learn how to run reports and read their own reports, they could go to that session. If it's a teacher who really wants to go to a literacy group for the new literacy curriculum, they could choose that. So very open choice. Then we might have another division day where it's very NYPD-focused, and we're bringing MEH and GM together for that training. So they're very much about the district initiatives, and what I would say is in our work plan of what we need to accomplish with staff.
Okay. And this may be a question to answer next week at the work session, because I had sent you questions about conference workshop travel budgets. And I think you sort of addressed it here, but you had, you know, one that went increased by 200% from, you know, $30,000 to $90,000, and, you know, maybe next week, or if you want to do it now, just explain where that's going, because it was, it seemed like you were taking it away. Very small budgets were being taken from the schools, and you were increasing something else that seemed like it would be a good idea, I just didn't know what it actually did.
What we've done is, in the past, and I would say if you went back even two years ago, we had all these little pockets everywhere in our budget of $200 and $300 and $500, and really, just the same people might go to a conference every year for $300, but we weren't really getting deep professional development that was going to impact the school division. And this year, we've even gone one more step in the FY15 budget, where we've pulled all of that money under Lisa's department, and we, and so that we have the big division initiatives that are funded, like NYPD, which is at least $30,000. And then also our RTI, Response to Intervention, which is very focused on our at-risk population set, is at $10,000 to $15,000. And then what they do is they apply now to go to a conference through Lisa. So we still have money set aside for the sites, but if they apply to go to something that doesn't meet the mission or the vision of the district, it's not in line with something that, that we would support. Then, and I, and some, I mean, we've had examples where somebody just wants to go to a conference just because we're making sure that when they're going, then they make a commitment to also come back and train staff and contribute back to the school division. So it's a much more focused effort. So you see pockets reduced, because it's all in one bigger pocket.
Okay. Could you give us next week a rough outline of what that? I mean, you've got about 120,000 between, you know, gifted and talented, and innovation and technology, just roughly, not, you know, to the penny, but just a general idea.
That's pretty easy. We can probably, today, we were just calculating, because most of them are big, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then I'm just curious, has there been any pushback from teachers? Because I'm just wondering, you're taking away from the, the school level, and, you know, you're centralizing, it makes it better for the division, but I'm just wondering if there have been any complaints that teachers aren't going to be getting to do what they've
If you ask a teacher who went to a conference every single year in Texas or Florida, then you're right, they don't like it. But I think if you, when we meet as principals and we talk about the professional development we're doing and the impact that it's having in our school sites, we're extremely pleased with how professional development is moving forward. And I would say RTI is a huge one, and also the gifted. You know, our gifted plan was, which I know Justin was on that committee last year, is radically different in how we're servicing gifted this year in elementary, and we really need to support them. So bringing in a specialist, the very first time they met with her, I think their whole attitude's changed, where, oh, gosh, okay, we have the support we really need, and bringing in somebody that that is their specialty. So I think, especially from the administrative level, all the principals, we feel like we're having some deep change. Lisa, do you have anything to add?
And I would say still, principals have the option to contact me ahead of time when a teacher wants to go to a conference and say, this is something I really support and is really beneficial, and we work together. So it's not just me making the decision, but it also has freed up the principals to be able to say no to the person who goes every year, because they share with me, well, they've gone for the last three years, I really wouldn't approve this, and I don't have as much, probably as close a relationship, so I can say no and explain why, and, and remind them of the initiatives for the division. So I think it's allowed us to work closer together.
All right, any other questions about this?
Okay. This is more of a rookie question, but with a 200-day contract, is there much room for movement around these, this calendar? I mean, I'm just used to this since, you know, the kids were born, but when we talk about maybe extending, you know, the other option, extending the, the teaching year, my, my question is, that's one option, but what about, what control do we have over the content? And maybe should we review the content and see if we get them to learn what they have to learn in another form that fits within this, rather than try to stretch it out? Because there are all the other competing factors. To Maeve's point, enrichment classes, some kids work over the summer, mine did, vacations, travel, you know, people make arrangements for this. You know, so there, there are a whole lot of factors sort of on the outside that are pressing and, and don't give us much room for. So that was just a few observations, I don't know if there are questions, but what, is there much that we can do around? there much that we can do around this in that 10-month timeframe?
Yeah, so I think your observation is an important one, and I think Maeve's is as well. You know, I sent a, a link to an article around to the, my colleagues on the board about some recent research on preschool that showed that certain students really benefit from preschool and other students don't really, and, you know, perhaps jurisdictions are spending money on universal preschool when it's not effective for all kids. So there are lots of nuances to this, and if we were to, to decide to take up a serious calendar discussion, which, you know, Mr. Sharp has been wanting for many, many years, these are all the things we would need to, to think about. We would need to talk to parents in the community and understand their perspectives. We need to look at all of those various alternatives. We would need to talk to staff, we would need to look at the costs, we need to look at all kinds of, and perhaps creative ways to do it. Last year, the board did ask to take this up and, and this, there was a staff discussion about it and, which didn't get much traction. So this is a, a big deal, so, which is why this, and we won't take that up between now, certainly, you know, when we approve this calendar, but yeah, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, and if the community wanted to take this up and there was a lot of interest between kind of parents, kids, staff and, and the board, we'd lay out a, a project and, and we'd take it up. But we haven't seen that interest at, at this point, so.
Margaret, do you have anything, any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you all very much for your comments, and we'll look forward to collecting more information next Tuesday, and then we will take this up at our next meeting. All right. The next item on our agenda and the last business item for this evening is the construction update, and I will hand this over to Dr. Jones.
Okay. Probably one of the exciting pieces is our GM MEH planning. Committee does start tomorrow, which is just focused on outlining, planning the process for how to move forward on that property, and that is with two members of city council, two members of the school board, one from the Economic Development Authority and one from Planning Commission, and Mr. Shields and myself. And we did have a pre-planning with staff today for about two and a half, three hours, just because it's hard to wrap your head around this big old project, but we're excited to be moving forward. Also, with Mount Daniel right now, working very closely with the city staff and then also with Arcadis and the attorney, trying to really look at if, depending on how those RFPs, how the proposal should come in, and we need to go to referendum when that would be. So I'll be informing the board and giving you more information about that, just double-checking all of the timelines for Fairfax County requirements, because Mount Daniel is in Fairfax County, as well as the referendum requirements. So we're working on that right now. And then last but not least is Cherry Street, and, you know, I feel like we meet on Cherry Street almost every other day. We do have a construction meeting every Wednesday afternoon, it goes for a couple of hours, and we've had quite a few night meetings on Cherry Street. We have one more tomorrow where we're really working on some of those, the issues with stormwater where the city is really weighing in, that's their portion of the project, we're really working on, right now mainly focused on parking and looking at those issues, how we drop buses off, doing lots of things like timing, are pre-K kids getting on and off buses right now, how long does it take to unload a Mount Daniel bus? So trying to do due diligence on that project, and probably the next time we meet, we'll know a little bit more, and I don't know if Mr. Lawrence has anything to add to that for Cherry.
John, do you have anything to add?
No, at this point, I'd really just like to thank the mayor, who last week alone went out, did two site visits to Cherry Street, each took at least an hour. He went out to look at buses, he went out to walk along the entire property, down the tennis courts, talked to neighbors, and then he went out again on Sunday to meet with neighbors. So, you know, the, the city council is really trying to help, and especially the, the mayor has gone above and beyond, coming out in the middle of a workday twice, two days in a row, to walk around the exact same site to try to find a way to, to help move this along. So hopefully tomorrow we'll push it a little further down the road.
Yeah, I would simply say that it's a, a small site, it's a compact site, and it's a, a compact street and a compact neighborhood, and so we are having some challenges with some issues there with parking and buses and some stormwater things and other things. The neighbors have concerns that are valid, that they need to voice, and we're listening to them, and, and committed to doing our best, working closely with Wyatt Shields and his staff to find appropriate resolutions and backup plans and backup plans to the backup plans, to keep that project moving along as quickly as we can. We do have some pretty tight time constraints if we're going to get it completed in time for, for kids to enroll. So I am, I'm going to ask that, on this, particularly on this project, but really on all our facilities projects as we move along, that, John, since you are the school board liaison really to those projects, if you would start every week or 10 days, whatever the right timing is based on what you see happening, to send a quick note to the members of the board to make sure that they're kept up to date with what's going on, because you're the most involved in those things? That would be really helpful, because things are, are happening fast and there are a lot of moving parts and there are a lot of projects, and want people to feel like they understand what's going on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Here, I don't know if it's a typo or just, but is this, is the timeframe for completion to enter the, not where your fiscal 17 starts September 16, your fiscal 18 starts September 17? I guess I'm trying, just trying to understand the timeline.
For?
For Cherry Street.
Oh, oh, the timeline for Cherry Street would be this coming September.
To open?
14, to open, yeah. Mount Daniel was, when he was talking about, which is out in the future. Yeah, the, the goal is to have that open on September 2nd of next year. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, no worries. Great. I'm going to come to you, Karen. Any, any other, any other questions or issues down in this? Yeah. Any questions in this?
Yes, I have a question about the parking. I wonder, is the degree to which we have planned for parking in the number of spaces and the, the ability to, to exit and to turn around, is that driven by the, the capacity that we have anticipated for that building? In other words, is it, is it anticipating a 105-student capacity or is it anticipating some other capacity?
The parking is actually set by the zoning regulations for the city and for an elementary school, and it's the same way we did at TJ as well with the new addition there. It's actually not set by number of students, which is one of the confusions, I think, with some of the people who have asked about parking. It's very different than a daycare, because our children, most of them come on the bus. And so the actual parking regulations for an elementary school, which is what this site is, is actually set by number of staff, not number of children, and it is very different. But that is a confusion, but it is set by the zoning and it does meet the zoning requirements of the city. It was a daycare center before. Now, I will say, even their parking they had before was less than what we're putting in, and their parking was okay, and they did have between 90 and 100 students.
Yeah, also, Karen, Tony's working on any number of plans B and C on parking in case we do see something there, and so we have other alternatives in case it turns into a problem, but I don't think we anticipate it based on the fact that most kids come on buses, it's a short day and a short year, and so. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll just say that I am concerned about the, the capacity of this for its, I, I, I understand that the maximum of a building, okay? But I think there are other considerations for capacity, and one is the kind of neighborhood that it's in and what the transportation and other factors are in that neighborhood. Another part of capacity has to do with what are the other constraints on our system? We have a required K through 12 system, and we have tremendous pressures on us to provide for the enrollment growth, the facilities, and all that we're attempting to do in our K through 12 system. We do have requirements for a, a specific population to serve in pre, preschool, and yes, we, that population is also likely to grow. There are some options for that, for that population, that we, we can provide the, the service. Some parents will choose for the service to be provided elsewhere because of choices that they have about their work and how long a, a school day, how long a school year they want to be able to have their, their children participate in. So there, there are several considerations for capacity for that location, and while we may have a very strong support, and, and I, I have a very strong desire to support access to preschool for every child who would like to, to, for every, for every family that would like to have their child access preschool. The, the, the ways to, to get that done are not just confined to this particular property. They, they, they can be helped by this property and we, we should pursue it, but there are constraints that we should consider that are, are not just driven by the number of rooms in this particular building. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Dr. Jones, how many students to be, anticipate to be in this facility for the next, I don't know how, what your planning horizon is, four, five, seven years?
Our goal is 55 right now, and that's just to bank sure that we have balanced classes, and what we're planning is classrooms with 11, and it has seven students without disabilities and four who do have disabilities. And again, that's so that we can have more of a community preschool field for our children with disabilities. So that's the goal for us right now.
Okay, and do, I don't think that there's any intention that this facility would ever house a universal preschool program for the City Falls Church.
No.
Right, okay. Okay. So thank you for that, Karen, for sharing your concerns. Anything else?
Could I just ask a follow-up question on the, the nominal capacity of the build, of the classrooms is 15. Is that correct? Is that, I mean, so they could hold that number of kids, is there a clarification or an explanation as to why 15 isn't a good number to work with mentally if you take six times 15 or seven times 15, which, which is one of the issues floating out there?
Primarily because it's special needs, and we know that in our special needs, I don't know that we've ever had 15. I'm sure we haven't actually. 12 would be, be the max, since the program's been in existence, where we would have a balance, and that's why we're starting with 11, which gives, gives us really a cushion of one. Now, if it were an ESOL population for family literacy, we might have one class of 15, but in all honesty, we've had classes as more, as small as four and six, seven and eight. As a matter of fact, one of our classes only has eight in it right now, and it just depends on the students and their needs. But this building is really, you know, for our special needs population, and you can't, and most of those situations, you would never have 15 children in there, but seven. Yeah.
And how many people were, how many kids were, when the Easter Seals was running it, how many kids were there?
On the official report, so it's not coming from me, and this is when they did the task force in 2011, the number was between 90 and 100. And then after they made the, the, after the decision was made to turn it over to the schools, the numbers fell down a little bit, but between 90 and 100.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing is future agenda topics. This is the new thing that we put on our list so that people know that this is your opportunity, if you have things you'd like us to talk about in the future, to bring them up and see if the board has sufficient interest to put them on the agenda at some point. Any, anybody have things on your mind?
Do we have a STEM discussion? Are we having one today?
No.
Oh, well.
You see the kids here?
Which is what triggered this?
You can go on the field trip if you'd like.
No, but I have, I have a, I, I'd like a discussion or at least better understand the STEM program and the way it's set up, not as a standalone at the higher levels, but more of building it through the curriculum to encourage. I mean, there's always this talk about we have a shortage of folks in science and that, you know, and so if I'm using my kid, and sorry to put it on the spot, but the tendency STEM is something to shy away from instead of, if it's, if they were, if it was inculcated in what they were doing from the very beginning, they'd get to the highs, middle and high school and not even think twice about getting involved in that sort of thing. So that's just a discussion, I sort of want to better understand how we're set up and if there are other ways to get the kids.
Great, it's an excellent suggestion, because we've been making some changes the past few years, and I'm sure we'll have more in mind, so thanks for that. Thanks for that. Any, any other ones? Anybody's got on their mind? All right, very good.
Could I just touch base on our subcommittee notion? I know there was some discussion of some input on things and starting to sketch out some ideas.
Sure, so let me, so I'll give you another update from the one I gave you, I guess last time we were together, which is we've engaged the Virginia School Board Association through a governance consultant that they have to come and work with us on the issue. I think Tony sent a couple of dates out to finalize, we're looking for a half-day Saturday session where she'll come and she will work with us, work with us, starting with the most basic question, which is kind of what is governance for a school board? What are the, the kind of the roles and responsibilities of the board versus staff? How they work together? What some of the things are we're trying to improve by perhaps considering subcommittees? So we're going to have a, a half-day work session on all of that to set a foundation, and then at the end of the day, we'll decide where we want to head with the conversation. I think April 26th and May 3rd, or I can't remember the dates Tony sent out, but she needs to send them again, so we need to coalesce around a date and we'll get that on the calendar. This is a consultant who has board experience herself, she's as a consultant to a number of boards, and she'll be collecting information for us from other boards in the state of Virginia, from school boards outside of Virginia, a survey of the literature and of her expertise. So she'll be bringing a lot of good kind of third-party background and will help facilitate what I hope will be a very rich conversation that will include the board, the superintendent and her leadership staff. So, thank you. It's coming up.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Dr. Jones?
Is it me now?
Yes? Oh, superintendent's report, please.
Excuse me. Just two quick items tonight, because I know it's late. We do have our tech advisory meeting again on Thursday if the snow doesn't come, all 10 inches of it, but, and that's been a great group, and lots of people really working on that tech plan. I think it's a pretty, it's a very robust plan. The actual infrastructure team was really working on metrics today and excited about that. We're trying to get that team in front of you next Tuesday. The difficulty, again, will be the weather. We really need to meet Thursday night, but we're going to try to do the best that we can. And also, just along the, the severe weather, just as a reminder, because people always wonder how we make the call and what we do, and, you know, we start watching the night before, and we have a team of, there's four of us, that watch all of the weather maps, watch everything coming in. We don't call the weather the night before unless we know for sure that it's here and it's upon us and that's definitely coming. If we can call it, we do, but if we can't, we wake up early in the morning about 3:30. I go out in my lovely car and drive around the city in the dark, and if it's snowy or icy, I get out, check the sidewalks, look at bus stops, I go to all of the schools to see how much clearing we have to do, because that's part of it. Sometimes people don't think it's maybe as bad, but we have to make sure that our crews can actually get on-site, get everything cleared. If that is not, if I don't feel good about that, John's watching the weather, John Brett's watching the weather and telling me it's coming strong. The buses, we're not feeling like the buses are going to be able to get cleared fast enough to get those on the road. We have to make the call by 5:00 AM. So then we decide on school. This week, the biggest question we've already had today, and John went ahead and sent a message out, if we are out on Thursday or Friday, we are going to be out on Monday. And part of the thinking there is that because we really don't know about Thursday and Friday, we do have plenty of hours banked, and we have so many people who have planned vacations or other things, where it really impacts us is getting substitutes and teachers that have plans and the staff. So that's where we are on Monday, and if we lose a day, we are still out.
All right, very good. Moving along to board and student liaison comments. Maeve, do you want to start us off tonight?
Okay, so just a couple things. I want to congratulate the Scholastic Bowl team. They are moving on to states, and our other winter sports teams are advancing in conferences and districts, so all those games are happening, and spring sports are starting in two weeks, I believe. So transitional time at the high school, but hopefully exciting for a number of our student athletes and teams as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Ward?
The athletic boosters did not meet last night because of the playoffs. They're actually meeting tonight, and I obviously can't be there, so I have no report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ankuma.
How's the chamber board meeting this morning? Not a whole lot going on that affects the schools, but at least, for what it's worth, they talked about trees and new arborists, the lack thereof, and they're going back and forth. For what it's worth, the Kaiser, the parking arrangement that I guess we have with Kaiser to use when they're off is in place now, so that, for folks going to state theater or doing something at night, just keep in mind that, that. Lincoln, the Lincoln Properties Project, the date to start that is yet to be determined, but Rushmark, for those who don't know, may start bulldoze, is actually starting some work within that environment, though official groundbreaking is March the 24th, but I believe they'll start bulldozing in the next week or two, so just keep an eye out for that. But other than that, the spectrum development, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but I heard today that there's potentially $2 million for the schools in terms of profits, so, sounded, I heard schools and I had money, so I was all right. But otherwise, that was pretty much it this morning. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Lawrence?
Just a couple things. First of all, Marty, thank you for setting up the board docs training Saturday. I wasn't able to stay because we started late, but just, you know, for the half-hour that I was there, I learned a whole lot more than I had in, you know, the past year and a half, so, you know, if we could set that up again, maybe for more people, that would be very good, because there were parts of it I didn't even know existed. Later this month, hopefully we'll have the WABE meeting that we were going to host last month that got snowed out, and at the rate, February's going, just to keep our fingers crossed. I went to the peak meeting last week, and because of snow, there was not one in January, so it was incredibly long, and because they meet every month, we're also meeting next week, and that should be incredibly short, which would balance out. And I'm sure if there was anything that needed to be brought up, Amanda would have done it. I sent you all a note about the Congressman Moran meeting that I had set up last week for the, for VSBA and NSBA, and, you know, made sure that, you know, he understood that we thanked him, thanked him, thanked him, and he got a virtual hug from Susan, because neither of us wanted to, you know, just do the real hug.
Make it a real hug.
Exactly. And finally, very important announcement, next Thursday, Friday, Saturday at MEH, and it was funny, because I saw the students here, and several of them are in the play, Mulan Junior will be coming your way, so please come. I have a person in my household in it, Maeve has two people in her household in it, so it's a, it's definitely a must, must-see, so thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Mr. Sharp?
I did attend the Alliance for Youth session last Wednesday evening, and I want to thank those who helped put that program together. The panelists were just extremely well knowledgeable of, and in some cases, unfortunately, experienced in some of the problems of substance abuse that are occurring in our, in our community. And I hope that much of that information will be, will be certainly well accepted by those who attended, but that it can be, be also well distributed, that we've, we've had that opportunity to receive those experts and experienced people, and hope many, many in our community will be able to take advantage. I did also attend BIE meeting earlier this, this month, and Mary Beth Conley has put together a really terrific program in that area, outreach to business and getting business and other community members involved in the schools, helping to provide lessons that are based on real-world experience, and also a good bit of funding for different kinds of programming that we wouldn't be able to have without, without it. And that, the funding that she's sort of counting in the overall total includes some, some funding that comes directly into the BIE-related programs, but also those related to the Education Foundation. And it's just, just an outstanding cooperative effort that she and the foundation staff have going for our schools, and add a tremendous amount for, tremendous enrichment for our schools. You'll see around the room this evening, some recognition baskets and posters and other, some thank yous on our individual desks here. This is School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to thank those who made the efforts to, to make us feel appreciated. I also will mention that February is Youth Leadership Month, and anticipate bringing a declaration next formal meeting that we have, as we did last year, a recognition for the many outstanding things that our youth do, and show us leadership in our, in our daily, and, you know, some review of what's been done in the last year. So that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mann?
Thank you. I attended the Parks and Recations meeting last week, and a couple of things from that of interest to the board. I mentioned one on our, during our work session on Saturday, and that was the Parks and Rec folks looking for early involvement within the, the planning for the George Mason property, and we discussed that, and I know that they have sent a letter to the city manager making that same request. The second part, they are also sending a letter to the, to the city manager, talking about potentially adding them to a checklist of areas for proffers when new developments are coming in, which could be of benefit to us when that comes along as well. They are looking to add a potential open space acquisition to help add some additional rectangular playing, practice field space in the city, and also some parking within that area, so stay tuned for that. And then, this one's more, I guess, for the superintendent, they had questions about the usage of the tennis courts that are over at Cherry Street, and if we are going to be using them for staging during the construction of the facility there, and what we will, how they'll be used, and once the construction is completed, of them being taken care of and back in the, the shape that they were in, like, once that construction process is completed.
Yep, and just since you've asked, I'll go ahead and answer. It's not really where they're staging, but they do, as part of the stormwater project, have to trench all the way around the outside, so the courts will be out of commission between now, and they're anticipating probably through August or September before they're, they're back. And they actually get a resurfacing, and Danny actually sits on our committee and our construction team, and so he should be able to apprise the board of what they're doing, because it's at his request and what's going back in.
Okay. And then I attended the Education Foundation's meeting last night. Two things from there of interest, a ad hoc group is going to be put together to come up with ways to, of how to use unrestricted funds at the end of the school year, of come up with some guidelines for what type of projects that are going to be looked at and possibly recommended to the full board for expenditures. And then the other one, which I thought is pretty exciting, about they are working with the, and Debbie can talk, mention this, about you working with the Curry School at the University of Virginia, and the potential of two UVA fellows being placed within the schools, and that would in turn be a good kind of recruiting process of having a couple of students, and maybe working towards some type of arrangement with those students to then be here in the school system for a couple of years as part of that, and she's working on a, they're working with a grant with Apple Federal Credit Union to help facilitate and fund that, which I think is a great something to kind of help us recruit and retain someone with the top-notch students coming from the education program at UVA.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Castillo, you're up.
Just a couple of things. George Mason, also concurrent with the Quiz Bowl, also fielded a team for its academic this past weekend, and just wanted to call, give them a shout-out for that. Daughter Annie also will be in Mulan Junior, so go see all three shows. The other thing I will note, I think we should all note the sad events at Langley last week, the deaths of two students over two days, and I think that should galvanize us to consider what happened, and be aware and cognizant of what happened, to try to figure out why, and be, be very much on our guard that, that we don't see a repetition of this anywhere in this area. And I think the superintendent and her team are on that, and I thank them for that, and that's all for now.
All right, thanks very much. I simply want to remind the community, next Tuesday night at 7:00 in the central office, we'll have our next budget work session. Topics on the agenda will include staff compensation, and the items related to the calendar thing we talked about tonight, also the alignment of budget resources for student performance according to our three-year plan and priorities, which would include technology among a number of other things. So please come. I want to take a second to thank the budget watchers who religiously, year after year, attend our budget work sessions and come and speak at our budget hearings, and pay attention to what we're doing, and help us, once we've made our decisions, communicate those to our colleagues on city council, and you know who you are, and I just want you to know that I appreciate the fact that you invest so much time, year after year, to make sure that we do the right thing by our kids here in the city. For members of the board, as you study the budget materials you have so far, if you have questions, please send them to Tony and to me. If you have ideas, please send them to Tony and to me. We have a short cycle, because we missed a week with some weather, and if we need to extend a week, we certainly can, you know, it'll give Wyatt Shields a bunch more gray hair than he already has, because he needs time to incorporate our budget in what he's doing, but we don't have that many more meetings left, and we need to start hammering some things down. Unless there's anything else, the last thing we have to do tonight is approve minutes, and then we'll be adjourned, and so we have two sets of minutes from January 14th and January 28th. Unless there is an objection, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to approve these, and seeing none, so ordered. Thank you, everybody.